Good morning. It is May 16th. It is 10:01. All three county commissioners are here and we have a packed room, which is fantastic. I'd ask at this time everyone to stand for a moment of silent meditation and then we will lead you in the pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is a fantastic day for the county commissioners and for this community. And we have now the national, 2018 National County Government Month essay winners. But before we do the county, we're very lucky to have Vivian Parsons here from the County Commission Association of West Virginia. And we have a state winner. If you want to come up and state who it is and what school, it would be fantastic.
Good morning. I'm Vivian Parsons. I'm the executive director with the County Commissioners Association. And we have a three-pronged mission at the association, representation, education, and communication. And so to further our education prong, we provide education certainly for our membership, but also an effort to educate the public about what county commissioners do and what you're responsible for. To further that and to tag on to the National County Government Week Month, we do an essay contest for eighth grade students targeted toward eighth grade students across the state. And the essay is based on the question, "How does my county commission make life better for me?" So we're looking for a 13-year-old's perspective of how they intersect with their county government. We had just less than 200 essays submitted this year, so it was a very difficult task to come up with a first, second, and third place winner. We have, and so we fudged a little bit, and we have a couple of honorable mentions as well. And Mon County particularly had a lot of essays submitted. So we have two honorable mentions from Mon County. And if they are here, we do have a certificate and a little gift for them on the honorable mentions. Honorable mention is awarded to Eden Ferguson, South Middle School. Is Eden here? Okay. And also to Julia Layden, South Middle School. And if they aren't here, we will certainly mail them their certificate and little gift that we have for them. And now, Mon County also has the second-place winner in the state, and that's no small feat out of 200 essays. Isabella Farrell, Francis, St. Francis Middle School is our second-place winner. Is Isabella here?
Her teacher.
You're her teacher? Okay. We have a monetary award for Isabella. It was in our brochure, it stated $250, and we actually had to increase our budget just a little, so she'll be happy to know that we have a $300 award for her. So if you would take a certificate, thank you. And thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity to promote county government.
Well, thank you. I'm very glad you're here today because you're going to be able to see what we're about to do. We have three individuals. We had, what, 75 applications roughly?
Roughly.
Yeah, at least 75 applications. And the, this certificate is being awarded to Leah Hatcher, an eighth-grade student at St. Francis Central Catholic School for her third-place essay. Well, I'd like her to come up. And also, also her teacher, her teacher. We have monetary awards for both of you. And Leah, we also have, I think that you're not going to realize, we have a seat for you.
Well, she's mine.
Oh, she's yours? Oh, okay. Oh, great.
She knows why she's mine.
Oh, okay. Is there somebody, do you want to just say who is with you, Leah? Would you like to just say who's here with you? Your parents with you or?
My mom.
Okay. And great, well, come on, welcome. Sorry, Sean, you get the second. Okay. This certificate is being awarded to Rachel Shockley, an eighth-grade student from Mount near Middle School. If we'd like her to come up. And Rachel, and did you want to say who you were with or who is here?
My teacher, Ms. Addy.
Okay, great. Well, you're going to be sitting over here. And if you could give that to Rachel, Mrs. Addy, she'll be, she also gets a monetary award. And we are very pleased to announce the first-place award winner from St. Francis Central School also is Chloe Fitz. And if the teacher would also come up. So you're double-dipping. This is for you. And who are you with?
My parents, my mom and my dad.
Great, okay. Well, we want to thank you. And you have some special duties we're going to show you. You're going to run the meeting. So I will help you. And I even have something written out for you, so we'll work it all out. But I don't know if the other two commissioners want to say anything, but this has been, and Eldon Collins here who was here when we all began this. And this is just a great community program. And it really, what the best comment I had heard from some of the students were that their parents learned what the county commissioners did. So we were real pleased with that. Did you want to say something?
Well, from the aspect of the Historical Society and everything else that goes on, this is very, a really good day. My first degree was in English Literature, so I really appreciate the fact that I see these essays coming forth from these students.
No, it was a really interesting process going through all the essays and reading It highlighted some of the focus that the citizens see in regards to what we do, so it shined a light on that. And it was a fun process. It was a tough process, though, going through all these, these essays and making these decisions. But they were all, a lot of very good input.
Well, we thank you. And if I am correct, did your sister not also win one of these?
Yes.
So it runs in the family, so I'll tell you that. We have some, maybe you'll be going into politics in the future.
Public service.
Public service, okay. Oh, sorry, public service. Okay. So the next thing that we'll do is just read. That line, "County Administrator."
Consent and approval, county administrator.
Okay.
Good morning. We have five exonerations for $760.82, vouchers for General County Fund, 199, 52305, 911, $14,003.9647, Chestnut Ridge Park, 90657, Mason Dixon Park, $3,041.52, Assessor's Valuation, $5,008.2101, Star City Tiff, 109, 16843, Morgantown Industrial Tiff, 124, 57796, Mon General Tiff, 191, 31769, and the University Town Center Tiff, 638, 97997. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $25,006.4094, Magistrate Court, 7865, 911, $10,001.9368, Chestnut Ridge Park, 64770, Assessor's Valuation, $2,001.9391, for a voucher total of $1,326,856.55. We have no budget revisions. Vacancies for boards and authorities, the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals, the Mon County Planning Commission, River Road Public Service District, Mountain Line Transit Authority, and the Montague County Development Authority. Fiduciary orders for May 16th, 2018.
Move for approval?
Is there a motion?
Okay, so now you say it's been properly moved and second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
That's all. Get them. Okay. Now, who's your number five?
Introduction of new employees or personnel changes. Mr. Doyle, Director of Facilities.
Thank you very much. For you.
Well, I kind of feel bad for Clayton. When I was introduced, I only had three people I had to get the blessing from, but I guess today he has six. But we're here today to introduce and get your blessing to add Clayton Neal to our maintenance department. Clayton is from the Morgantown area, and he is going to be on our construction crew. He's done various construction throughout Morgantown, probably his whole life, so hopefully everything will be good. So Clayton will be a 40-hour-a-week, full-time employee entitled to full benefits. He will start today, May 16th, at the rate of pay of $34,000 a year with a six-month probation.
Move for approval?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion?
Rachel, do you have any questions? No discussions then.
Okay.
Seeing none, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome to the county. Welcome. Good to have you.
Sheriff Perry Palmer?
We have to be real good when he's in the room.
Good morning.
Yeah, got to watch out for him.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Introduce a new deputy sheriff for hire. He's, he started today, he's currently in the State Police Academy in his seventh week. And the reason why that is, he went in his WVU PD, come up on our list, we went him through all the process, so he's now, as of today, a sheriff's deputy. Starting salary would be $33,279 a month, and he'll be on one year's probation.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion?
Actually, I'm going to say something. How many new, in the last six months, how many new deputies will this make that we're trying to?
We have, we have currently two with Stephen Neff. We have Seth Fitzwater, they both started the academy at the same time.
And we hired Jesse Caldwell, May 1st, and he's currently at our office.
He comes from Pennsylvania, and he'll have to go to the trader class in September.
Thank you.
This name sounds familiar, that he didn't work for you before?
Stephen Neff, yes, he was a.
Court security.
Two years. Then went with WVU, yeah, good.
I'm glad we got him back. He's a very, he's a very fine employee.
Yes, he's a good guy, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perry DeChristopher, prosecuting attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, yes. So we are here today to introduce someone who probably doesn't need an introduction. You know Eric Brown is our newest member of our prosecuting attorney's office. We have taken him from our judicial system and put him in our criminal justice system, and we're super excited. Our county will be benefiting from that as well as, as well as our office. He will be kind of trying to hold the ocean back with a broom in magistrate court for a bit, which is a very big job, and we're glad that he came Monday and came back Tuesday. So I'd like to just introduce all of you that don't know him already to Eric Brown.
Is there a motion?
Motion for approval? Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion?
I, for one, like to welcome Eric. I've known Eric for years, and though we're taking from Judge Tucker, I hope she'll forgive us, and, but it really is a plus for the county and Perry's, Perry's team. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Secora. It's an honor to be able to peer before you this morning and to, and to accept this position for the county. Thank you.
And Leah, I think you know, you St. Francis girls know of.
Jasper's dad. Better known as Jasper's dad.
Jasper's dad.
They do know me as Jasper's dad. I should have introduced you as Jasper's dad rather than Eric Brown, right.
So do you guys have any specific questions? Anything you wanted to know, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Welcome.
Welcome, Eric. Glad to have you.
Comments from the public, come to the podium.
Anyone who wants to come for the public portion?
Colleen Coon-Grantz.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have several requests for reimbursements. The first one is the Day Report Center grant in the amount of $15,119.48. The next one is the VOCA grant in the amount of $7,680.2. I have the JJDP grant, Voices 2 Program, in the amount of $1,989.37. Another JJDP grant, this is the DMC program in the amount of $5,290.15. The Governor's Highway Safety Program, impaired driving, in the amount of $6,449.31. And another Governor's Highway Safety Program, distracted driving program, in the amount of $2,574.57.
Move to have the president sign?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Resolution, National Infrastructure Week, Eldon Helen, former county commissioner, Commissioner.
Thank you, commissioners. We appreciate this opportunity to ask you to pass this resolution. It's brought forward by the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. As you well know, the future of our development, our state, must tie to all new future development, protection, our environment with tourism. So we stand together to ask you to support this resolution, if I may read it. Infrastructure Week 2018 Resolution of the Montague County Commission. Whereas the week of May 14th to May, March to the 21st, 2018, is observed in West Virginia and nationally as the sixth annual Infrastructure Week. And whereas Montague County relies on critical infrastructure, including our roads and bridges, our railroads and transit systems, our rivers, our ports and airports, our pipes and water systems, our reliable power supply, our access to broadband, and our connectivity to the regional, national, and global economy. And whereas this infrastructure enhances our local and regional economy, our quality of life, our safety, and the strength of our communities, as demonstrated by some recent local infrastructure TIF, stiff investments, such as the Star City entrance and waterfront, the Mon General Drive and Maple Drive, and the University Town Center, West Ridge Business Center encompassing a ballpark and an interchange in related infrastructure. And whereas decades of underfunding and deferred maintenance have pushed infrastructure to the brink of a national crisis, with preventable catastrophic failures, including derailments and collapses occurring as a result. And whereas the United States of America risks losing its competitive advantage to foreign economies by failing to adequately invest in its infrastructure, whereas Americans are waiting in traffic, wasting time and money because of our poor infrastructure. And whereas every dollar invested in infrastructure generates nearly $2 in economic output. And whereas to grow our economy, keep Americans safe, and strengthen our communities, we need all levels of government, the private sector, to work together to rebuild and repair our nation's infrastructure. And whereas Infrastructure Week 2018 has been established to highlight infrastructure investment needs and to recognize and encourage leadership at the federal, state, and local levels. And whereas Infrastructure Week challenges policymakers and the public to address the challenges facing U.S. infrastructure, to move beyond short-term fixes and deferred maintenance, and to envision the innovative solutions, technologies, policies, investments that will improve America's infrastructure future. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Montague County Commission officially recognizes the week of May 14th, 2018, as Infrastructure Week and urges the citizens of our county, our north-central West Virginia region, and our state to join in this special observance with appropriate acknowledgements and learning opportunities found at the National Infrastructure Week website, www-infrastructureweek.org. And resolve further that despite fiscal challenges, it is important for our local, state, and federal governments to dedicate sufficient resources to transportation and infrastructure investments in our community. And resolve further that a copy of this resolution, the Montague County Commission, be delivered to the municipal, state, and federal elected officials representing our community and its residents. Adopted May 16th, 2018, Thomas C. Bloom, President, Edward A. Huckins, Commissioner, Sean P. Secora, Commissioner.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. May I approach?
Yes, oh, please. In fact, we could sign it, and then we could, we'll have it. Thank you.
We appreciate the commission's support. As everybody knows, infrastructure, our two biggest challenges when it comes to tourism, are roads and broadband. That's the two top of our list right now. But infrastructure as a whole, this is very important to our community as well as the tourism economy continuing to advance. So we thank you for your support.
You guys want to take a picture? Commissioner Bloom, would you like a picture with everybody?
Yes, please.
Do you guys want to go up on the bench?
We're going to all get a picture.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
I noticed the students are all sizing up your chair.
I know. Well, the one family's already has two, you know. They're working. I do need that. Do you have any younger brothers or sisters? Okay, good, so.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Any correspondence?
No, sir. No, ma'am.
Any unfinished, unfinished business?
No, sir. No, ma'am.
New business? To consider for approval, requisition number eight for the University Town Center, EODD Special District, excise tax revenue, your funding and improvement bond series, 2017, a administrative expense fund.
Okay, we have a requisition for $1,130, and this is a requisition from Munichap as part of their oversight of the Tiff funds.
Move for approval?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion?
I just want you to know that the three of you understand the next time you go to the University Town Center and see that development, you just help fund it and administrative fees. So you're now part of that development.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Presentation of 2018 land books and request for commissioners' signatures on oath and certificates.
The Assessor's Office brought that down last week for you all to sign. It's the 2018 land books.
Do we have, need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Move for approval?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Reports from elected officials?
I would like to tell everyone that we did complete canvas on Monday. We did receive an email from the Secretary of State's office. We will not be able to certify until next Monday statewide because there were some counties that could not canvass until later this week. So if it is the pleasure of the commission to just add the certification of the 2018 primary election to next Wednesday's agenda.
Yes.
And we'll just take care of it at that time.
I see no problem. Reports from county commissioners?
I'm sorry.
It's your report.
Oh, she caught me. Caught me not paying attention. And you guys may not be aware, but we're flying a little bit blind here tonight and today, and the girls are really helping us along because our system's down, so we're not able to see a lot of documents that we can usually see. So, but thank you. Really appreciate having you guys here today. You get a little bit of a slice of, it's not always this easy. Sometimes it's a little bit more controversial, but for the most part, it's a very important position. Last week, we had our Red Team meeting on Thursday, and we also had our Development Authority meeting, and both of those went very well, and everything's proceeding. Monday, as the clerk mentioned, we had canvassing, and just, just consistent with the election, the canvassing went very smoothly. We could have been out of there in two hours. Normally, that's a lot longer process. So I want to congratulate Carrie and her staff on a continuance of a great job with this primary election season. Yesterday, we had a commission meeting with Monty MS, which was very productive. And tonight, we have our District Four meeting with all the county commissioners in the, in the district, meeting with the state-elected representatives regarding the roads. So something we hear about a lot, roads. Thursday, I have a site tour of West Ridge that the developers, I've asked the developers to give me a tour, and they're going to give me a tour of the development. And at night, we have our MMPO meeting. Our MMPO is the group of all the organizations, municipalities in the area that make decisions on where roads are funded and infrastructure improvement processes. So that's another very important process. Other than that, congratulations and come back.
Would you prefer a first to Ms. Hatcher?
Well, thank you for having me. You had a lot of fun.
Anything else you wish to say?
I don't think so.
You'll notice I unceremoniously snagged her because I've known her since she was born. So she was going to be mine. Obviously, not to repeat, yes, the canvassing went excellently, Carrie. I mean, a great job. And I did have a landmark commission meeting on Monday, and we interviewed our second candidate for internship for working in doing the work, the field work that we'll be asked to be doing this year. Again, we had a great meeting with Mon Health Systems to review their plans, and I think really that people are going to be impressed when we do roll out the plan for the public, which we hope to in a week or so. And tonight, of course, the caucus meeting is very important, particularly with you looking at infrastructure and roads. And MPO along with that, which is tomorrow evening. Friday, the Historical Society will meet. I was, by chance, Mr. Chico, Charlie Chico, came in today and brought me a book of his. It's Morgantown, West Virginia, in the past. And leafing through it, I found the picture of our fountain on the Courthouse Square. Yes, which was apparently, he states, fed by an artesian well that was there. So very interesting historically, and that concludes my remarks.
Do you have anything you'd like to say first?
I forgot to ask Rachel. Rachel, do you have anything to say? That's quite all right.
A lot of positive things are coming out this week. First, we have to say kudos to Carrie and her staff. It was exceptional. It was so quick that we had people from Philadelphia there, and I believe, I think they sold it by just how well the process ran. Real pleased with that. Second, under the leadership of Susan Riddlewe, you know, I went to the CVB meeting, and it's unbelievable what, in a couple years, has turned, she has turned around the CVB. We are looking forward to some amazing programs, some amazing partnerships, and to say that, is it the beds on, heads-on-beds? Heads-on-beds is increasing, and there's some great development going on. And one thing that did come out at the meeting was that there were some question or concerns about the Morgantown Mall, and there's some good news going to be happening. Can't say that at this time. Can't say that at this time, but we were real pleased that, that's moving forward. Um, I also want to say that the, the three county commissioners want to thank, uh, Mr. Custer and, and Mon Health Services. We had an exceptional meeting. Uh, as in every meeting, they are then going to go to the parties to discuss what the plans are, and then they will be making in public within the next two weeks, we could say. I, I believe the community is going to be thrilled with the result of the partnership that we have and the services that will be provided, and that will all be coming, and then we will have an actual, and he is here, we're going to have like a public meeting, well, a press conference, or?
Press conference.
A press conference to explain all the information, so I want to, I want to thank you in that. Um, the final thing is something that I'm very ecstatic about for the county commission. Uh, we received this this week, and I'm allowed to now release this pre, press release. Montague County earns National Achievement Award for the Pantry Plus More Program, and I'll just read the first three paragraphs. Washington DC, from Fred Wong. Washington, Montague County has been recognized with an achievement award from the National Association of Counties, NACO. The awards honor innovative, effective county government programs that strengthen services for residents. NACO has recognized the Pantry Plus More in the Children and Youth Category 2018 Leadership Program. The Pantry Plus More Program is a school pantry program that is open daily to every student in a confidential manner all year long. Not only do they have food products, but it also provides personal hygiene products to eight local schools. This project has brought the community together to help the students who are food insecure. And then my quote on here was, "The Montague County Commission has been an integral part of this program, from providing space for the items and providing workers to help bring in 15,000 pounds of fresh produce for the citizens of Mon County monthly. The county commission continues to bring different agencies, businesses, and groups together to help resolve one of our basic needs for our children." And I can't say enough with the three students here that, uh, we are, we are thrilled to be a part of this, and as I learned, this is the first National Achievement Award in NACO in West Virginia, and, and it is for all three commissioners who continually promote this, and for the business and community that have really stepped up, so very, very excited about that. Uh, with that, uh, you can ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, say, "We are adjourned."
We are adjourned.
And you can hit the table. There we go. Great job. Congratulations.